In our entire country. This branch deals with everything from literally speeding and parking tickets to murders. So, I think the statistic is about 10% of the community actually reaches the courthouse and goes into the courthouse. However, you are affected by this as well. So, many of the people in the room are active in our community, especially within the electoral process, but I encourage you to go out and also support whichever candidates that you're going to support, but tell people in the community to go out and vote for these candidates because it's extremely important that we have an excellent turnout in this county. So, everybody's going to get a 60-second introduction. I'm going to start with Mr. Ahern.
Good afternoon. Michael Ahern, I'm running in County Court Group 15. Is the mic on? Okay, thank you. Again, Michael Ahern, County Court Group 15. I am honored to be here tonight. It's amongst being old friends. I have been in Fort Lauderdale, around Fort Lauderdale for a number of years. My wife and I actually ran three memorial campaigns for Jack Seiler. I've met many of you in those years, and fortunately, I am lucky enough, probably the only thing that Mayor Trentalis and Mayor Seiler agree on is me, and I am endorsed by both of them, and it's probably the only thing the two of them have ever agreed on. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Okay. Hello, is this on? Yes. I'm Chris Brown. I'm running for County Court Judge. I've had the most legal experience of everybody in this race. One, I've had jury trials in County Court, Criminal Circuit, Civil Circuit, Federal Court. I've argued before the Fourth and Third District Court of Appeals. But, I concede that all of us running for judge has the minimum requirements to be a judge. So, what separates me while I'm asking for your support? I've been married to my wife Mindy Brown for 37 years. I've been at Broward Reserve for 34 years, re-raised four children in Broward County, one of them special needs child, which taught me the necessity and the struggle that every family goes through in Broward County. We got involved with the Make-A-Wish Foundation, which helps children, one child at a time throughout Broward County, Special Olympics, who does the same thing, Hope South Florida. I'm closing now. I've been endorsed by the Sun Sentinel, who interviewed all the candidates and endorsed my campaign. I'm proud of that endorsement. But, the endorsement that I'm looking for tonight and throughout Broward County, this is where I go everywhere, is your endorsement. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Hyde?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Suzette Hyde. I've been an attorney for 23 years. Fifteen of those years, I've spent right here in Broward County. After I graduated from New York University School of Law, I moved to Broward County because it is the most diverse county in the state of Florida. I moved here with my son as a divorced, single mother, and one of the things I wanted to do was to open my own practice, which I've done for the past 12 years. I've represented families with integrity and with mission and a purpose. I've also served on the Broward County bench for the past 10 years as a civil traffic hearing officer, appointed by the Chief Judge to handle cases that are normally handled by the Broward County judges. And I have done that with dignity and with service to the community. I ask that you vote for me to be Broward County Judge if you are looking for diversity, experience, and equity on the bench.
Well, I'm somebody that likes to get into the tough questions first. So, I'm going to mess with the questions a little bit, Mary. I'm going to start with Mr. Brown, actually. Mr. Brown, you said something in your opening, I think that is important for everyone to understand. You said, "Everyone on stage has the minimum requirement," because there's a minimum requirement. So, that tells me, as an attorney, that you believe that you may have, are more qualified for the position. So, tell me, and tell the audience, what makes you qualified to sit in this position?
Well, like I said, I've seen the inside of a courtroom in the federal court system, county court system, and circuit courts. So, I know what makes a good judge. I've seen bad judges. I've seen good things happen in a courtroom and bad things happen in a courtroom. But, I think it's your personal experience, it's your family who defines who you are, your experiences you have personally, and I think that empathy that you bring to the bench, if you're not able to see the person in front of you as who they are and what they are, and you're not able to give them the fair day in trial, then, or fair day in court, then you shouldn't be a judge. And it's on the judge, if there's any injustice going on in the courtroom, it's on the judge.
Thank you. Mr. Ahern, I'm going to go around along the same path with you, not just with the minimum requirement, why are you the best qualified for the position, but what Mr. Brown also said is he's seen good things and bad things within the courtroom. How would you conduct your courtroom in a way that shows respect to the citizen, if it's pro se, as well as the attorney who's in the courtroom?
I'll keep it very simple. You know, we're asked this question a lot, and you know, I go back to what my Nana taught me at the age of three. I mean, it's about, listen, you have two ears, one, you know, you have two ears, you have one mouth. So, the key is listening. All I can, I can't promise anybody a result, but I can promise that if I have the privilege to be a judge, that I will listen. I will listen to all sides, and I will articulate my position in a way that, again, I don't believe that everyone's going to agree with me, but you will know where you stand, you will know what happened and why it happened. Thank you.
Ms. Hyde? You can clap, you can clap. Somebody's voting for these people, you can clap. Ms. Hyde, in your introduction, you stated that you went to NYU, correct, for law school, and you also stated that you came to Broward County because you believe it's the most diverse place in Florida. I agree, that's actually why I came down here as well. So, please tell the audience and the voting public why you believe you're best suited for this position, how your background influences that.
Well, as you're already aware, there are more and more people who are moving to Broward County. I'm not the only one, you're not the only one, who realizes that Broward County is a great place to live and to work here as well. And, if you want the bench to actually represent the people of Broward County, then you're going to pick someone who is, has not only seen quite a few things, but has also lived a diverse life, not just here in Broward County. I've lived in New Hampshire, Virginia, I've lived in Japan, I've studied Japanese, Spanish, so I bring a lot to the bench as well, personal experience.
Thank you. Okay, so, my next question, I'll keep it easy. And I'm going to start with you, Mr. Ahern. What is your judicial philosophy, and what do you believe the role of a judge is?
Again, I think in the setting of a county court judge, of which I'm running, it goes back to what I said a moment ago. This is the people's court. This is, we're dealing with misdemeanors, we're dealing with small claims matters. It's about empathy. It's about understanding and listening to people, and again, giving them their say so they feel that they were treated fairly, that they feel that the system worked for them and did them right. And that is my philosophy is, again, you may not always agree with me, but you'll know where I stand, you'll know why I made the reasoning and the rulings that I did. Thank you.
I like someone that can stick to the rules, by the way, be right in there, every good lawyer does that. Also, I want to acknowledge that he has jet-black Jordan Ones on while he's in a suit, so he needs to get a round of applause for that. Ms. Hyde, same question to you. What is your judicial philosophy, and what do you believe the role of the court is? And, don't start the timer yet, because Mr. Ahern brought up a very good court, the people's court. He said it's the people's court. The county court is effectively the people's court. So, how would you represent the people in your judicial philosophy and your role as a judge?
Well, the laws are created to keep the community safe. If we don't have a set of laws that we all agree on, then of course, there'll be chaos. But, in applying the laws, we also need to apply grace to people. We need to understand their individual situations. We need to see that there are working people who sometimes make mistakes, but we also don't give away everything. I mean, I've been on the bench as a hearing officer, and there are times where I've had to suspend people's licenses in order to keep the community safe, as well as reduce their fines. So, it's with the same philosophy that I will bring to the bench as County Court Judge.
Thank you. So, Ms. Hyde, Mr. Brown, you're next, brought up something that I always talk about to everybody in my law firm, and it is something that we're all taught in law school, the Iraq. Issue, Rule, Analysis, or Application, and Conclusion. She said, "How you apply the law." So, in your judicial philosophy and as your role as a judge, how would you apply the law? How do you, what is your philosophy on the application of law within our system?
Well, that's very simple, comes very natural to me. You have to see every individual as a person, and they expect to see the law treat them the same across the board. Not political favors, not who am I in here with, who's the best lawyer, who's paying the best lawyer. This is the people's court. So, you have to make sure that that's your top of priority. If you can't do that, you have no business on the bench. That's number one. So, you apply the law equally to everyone. You have to know the law. I think all the candidates up here know the law, but you really have to know the people and be, have empathy for, thank you, I'll follow the rules too.
Mary, you're going to hate me again. I want you to put 15 more seconds on the clock for every single person. I know we're going to balance out on this. And I'm going to start with you, Mr. Brown, with something that you just said. I'm going to go 15 seconds for each person. So, with what you said is that it's, you have to know the people of the community. Give me 15 seconds of why you believe you know the people in this community.
Well, I've been a part of this community for 34 years. I mean, I've been around people all my life. Everybody knows, if you look, you'll see people. If you don't look, you won't. You can fake it, you can show up and do things at inadvertent events, but if you don't get involved with each person, one person at a time, one child at a time, you're not going to know the people.
Ms. Hyde, same question to you, but you have said you've been in Japan, Virginia, all over the country, and you moved to this community, you weren't born in this community. So, what makes you believe you know the people in this community?
For me to sit here and say that I know everyone definitely would not be the truth. The point of being a judge is that you suspend your belief, you suspend some of your assumptions that you may have, you check yourself as to what you think you believe about people, and you listen to people and give them an opportunity. You don't judge them based on the way that they look, the way that they sound.
Thank you. No, do you?
The way that they sound.
I know Mary liked that one. Same thing to you, Mr. Ahern, one other thing, because you've been involved in the political community as well as the community at large, and you've even been endorsed by two mayors of Fort Lauderdale. So, how do you know the people of the community?
Because, again, it's nothing new to me. I worked this community, I campaigned in this community, I canvassed in this community, I've actually participated in Mr. Albedino's, in crime walks in Lake Ridge. I know the issues of homelessness, I understand the issues, again, Lake Ridge would stop and shop, it's still there. The problem is, is that I can't fix those problems, but I can listen.
I appreciate you.
And David, I broke the rules, and I am sorry.
My little taste as a judge, I appreciate that. We're going to do 15 more seconds, this is going to be a fire round two. And I know you guys have probably been asked this question, and the political veterans know that this question's always asked. Why do you want to become a judge, Ms. Hyde?
It would be incumbent upon me to step up and do more. I always tell people, justice is not just in the courtroom, it's required for everyone. Each one of you here, we have an obligation to play to make sure that there is justice for everyone. But, for me, having my experience, having experience in the courtroom, then that is the next natural step for myself.
Mr. Brown?
I basically run a practice for 27 years, all my clients were people, I really like helping people, it's my natural tendency. County Court is the people's court, it's the area where I'm going to be able to help people. So, that's why I think I'm running for judge, I think I'd be a great judge, and I'm asking for your support.
Excellent, good timing. Mr. Ahern, same question, why?
Eighteen years old, I was charged with a crime, I did probation for two and a half years, that judge has now endorsed me. That judge took a chance on me, and I want to take a chance and play it back to this community.
Short and sweet. Those were all the questions, so all the candidates now have 60 seconds to tell, to give a closing statement, closing argument. Mr. Brown, you're first.
Okay. I've reached out to everyone in Broward County. Broward County is very big, so I appreciate the opportunity of being here, I appreciate the opportunity of you listening to me. I've been endorsed by the Sun Sentinel, the Ayupa, which is a police association, and Hispanic vote. I have at least seven judges that have contributed to my campaign, support my campaign, but it's really about the person walking in the courtroom. If you don't have that tendency to say, "I'm the guy that's going to do it, and I'm going to be fair," that's not the right person for the bench. If you've got political favors, or you're looking for political favors, that's not the right person to be on the bench. I'm a people person, I love Broward County, I love what I've done in Broward County, I'm looking to sit on the bench in Broward County, not because I'm ending my career, not because I'm going to move up to the Supreme Court or do something else. You know, I've run a practice, I've loved the law, I'm ready to do something, this is the next step. County Court is a natural fit for me, the Sun Sentinel endorsed me, and I'm hoping that you will endorse me also. Thank you very much.
Excellent. I'm going to say something before we go to Mr. Ahern. Mr. Brown has said this a couple times, this is not about political favors, this is not about politics, this is about the people's court. And, you made a good point in saying that. It's unfortunate that we have to go through this process, though, it's a political process, but thankfully, we have rules in the judiciary to ensure that judicial integrity is put in place. With Mr. Ahern, closing argument.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have five endorsements of circuit judges. No one has the endorsements. It's not, oh, this is the first time I've heard this, oh, he gave me money. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm the only one in this, in my group, that has endorsements from five circuit judges that I practiced in front of. I not only have that, I have the endorsement of your fire union, your police union, I'm the only one with that. Now, why do I have it? Because I was fortunate enough, when Jack Lekenski was the union president, that I had the opportunity, he brought me in, and I worked with him, and quite honestly, the most honored thing I have is this badge right here. And why do I have it? Because as an attorney for FOP, unfortunately, every time an officer discharges a gun in this community, a lawyer needs to be present. I was there for them, and they've been there for me, and I'm proud of their support, and I don't apologize for it, and I'm not going to let anybody say that I need to apologize for it. Thank you.
Ms. Hyde, your closing statement.
I believe the community should be concerned about three things when you're voting for a judge. One is experience, which I've talked a little bit about while I'm here. The other one is a dedicated commitment, not just dedicated, a demonstrated commitment to the community, and the other is a strong work ethic. I have passed three bars by myself through self-study. I have also started my own practices, I said, 12 years ago, and I'm a sole practitioner, I've helped a lot of families in the community. But, as far as my dedication to the community, something I don't talk about often enough, is my 10 years with the Florida Guardian-Adlighten Program. The Florida Guardian-Adlighten Program represents abused, abandoned, and neglected children. Some people will talk about their Guardian-Adlighten work, but it's not volunteer work, and I have been committed to that program for the past 10 years. I've also worked with the Big Brothers-Big Sisters Program, so I understand that there are people in the community which need to be protected. The law should not exploit people, that's not the purpose of the law. So, I ask for your vote, take the Hyde road, vote Suzette Hyde.
Everybody give a big round of applause. You have excellent candidates for County Court Group 15.
Good evening, everybody. All right, so I'll only be up here for a couple of minutes. I want to recognize a couple of members of my staff. Michelle Diago is here, as well as Claudette Hamilton in the back way for everybody, so they'll be around. I'm actually running to another event right after this, but they'll be around to answer any questions that you all might have, or help you out with anything you might need. As far as my remarks tonight, I just want to make sure that everybody is able to cast their vote in this election, and I know that the folks that are in this room are, a lot of times, you're not just here on your own behalf, and it's great that you're showing up to talk to judges, but you also have a broader network of people that you have an opportunity to talk to. So, I want to share with you all the three different ways that you can vote here in Broward County. So, the first way, and the way that is underway right now, is vote by mail. So, a lot of folks have already voted by mail here in Broward County, and you actually have until this Saturday, August the 13th, to request a vote by mail ballot if you haven't already. Couple of things that I love about vote by mail. One, is that we have postage-paid, self-addressed return envelopes, to make it very easy for you to send it back. So, you just have to make sure that you sign your envelope. When people tell me that they're concerned that their signature may not match, what I recommend is that you use your driver's license, because that's usually, or your state ID if you have one, because that tends to be the signature that we have on file for you. So, if you use that as a guide, you will probably give us a signature that will match. You can also sign up for notifications from us with our new ballot track system. If you opt in for text messages, we will literally text you and let you know if there's a problem with your ballot, so that we can swap that out for you. So, vote by mail is number one. You also, when you choose to vote by mail, if you do choose to vote by mail, it does not exclude you from being able to still vote in person. Our in-person early voting starts this Saturday, August the 13th. We have 23 locations across Broward County, and we're working to expand that network and grow it. What's great about early voting is that if you have a vote by mail ballot, you can bring it to any of those 23 early voting sites and drop it off. You can also still vote in person if you choose to, you just can't vote more than once, but our system will keep you from doing that. But, you can choose which way you want to vote, and you have those options available to you. All right? So, when you go, you can pick any of those 23 locations across Broward County. Now, the third way to vote is Election Day. For those of us who like to wait until the last day to vote, I'll tell you, your options get very limited. Whereas during early voting, you can go to any of the 23 locations. Does anybody know how many options you have on Election Day? One, that's right. All right, a lot of people knew that. All right, so you have one option on Election Day, and that is your assigned precinct. Now, this is the very first election after redistricting, so a lot of things have changed. So, please, look at your voter information card and see where your polling place is located, and actually make sure that you're going to the right polling place. We have a new tool on our website, especially for people who have recently moved. This new tool will allow you to put in any address in Broward County, and it will tell you what precinct and what polling place you should go to for those of us who like to wait until the last day. All right? So, just to review, those three ways to vote. Vote by mail, the most convenient, the most options there. And then, the second way is early voting, where you can pick any location in Broward County to go to, and you've got nine days for this election, you'll have 14 days in November, to go out and vote at any one of those locations, and then that last day where you must go to your one polling place. And by the way, you cannot drop off a vote by mail ballot at a polling place on Election Day. You have to take it to an office of the supervisor, and that vote by mail ballot must reach our office by 7:00 PM on Election Night. All right? So, thank you all so much for being here, for being engaged in this, and if you have any questions, Michelle and Claudette will be around to answer those questions. Thank you all, have a great night.
Give it up one more time for Joe Scott, your elected supervisor of elections. All right, so we're going to move quickly to the next group, which is Group 26, County Court, Judge Levy Cohen and Ms. Casia Early. And that's how they do it at the Victory Black Box Theater, off of Sis Trunk, so give it a round of applause. The DJ in the back, great job.
Wow, these lights.
All right, 60 seconds for introductions for Judge Levy Cohen and Ms. Casia Early. We'll start with Judge Levy Cohen.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to be here, this is a great event, and I'm so happy to be here. I'm Judge Marty Levy Cohen. Oops, okay, try again. First, I thank everyone for having us here. This is a wonderful event. I am Judge Marty Levy Cohen. I preside currently in County Court. I'm in the County Court Civil Division. It is an honor and a privilege for the past 12 years to serve as your judge. I have also handled cases in Circuit Court, which is one level up from County, in family, some criminal, some civil, and the Florida Supreme Court approved me after I was invited by the Fourth District Court of Appeals to work on 23 cases as a Fourth District Court of Appeals judge. I did that for a few months, and I authored four written opinions, which are law today. I am proud to serve Broward County. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Early?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Casia Early, and I'm a proud wife to my husband of 18 years, mother of four children. I also work for the federal government, and I have been named a Top 10 Attorney by the National Trial Lawyers Association, Top 40 Under 40, Top 10 Criminal Defense Attorney and Customer Service. But, who would have thought that I would have been receiving all of these accolades 18 years ago? Because 18 years ago, I was in solitary confinement while pregnant with my son, who'll be 18 years in January. But, that came through hard work, dedication, and sacrifice, and I've always been a community servant, sharing my story of redemption, because I believe that everyone, it should be given a second chance. Not only will I bring education to the bench because of my 100 trials to verdict, but I'm also going to bring compassion and empathy. Thank you very much.
She's a proud married woman. I would be happy if my wife said that.
I have a husband also. He's not here because he's a Circuit Court Judge, and he can't be here.
So, we're going to start it off spicy again, just like we did on the last one, just to let you guys know. So, we're going to go 15 seconds, we're going to do two quick rounds of 15 seconds. Colleen, I know, I know. 15 seconds. And it's because, as a good attorney, I listen to what everybody says when they're around me talking. So, 40 Under 40, Ms. Casia Early, we're going to start with you, Judge Levy Cohen, though. Broward County has statistically the youngest judiciary in the state of Florida.
I didn't know that.
What are your thoughts on that, Judge Levy Cohen? Do you believe it is a good thing for our community?
I did not know that. I hope I'm included in that, youngest, though. I just hit the 60 mark, so. I think that the judges that are on the bench right now, their heart's in the right place. They care about their job and the people around them, and they do a fantastic job. So, that's my answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Casia Early, 40 Under 40, Top 10, so you are not 40 yet. So, if elected, you would be one of the youngest judges on the bench. What are your thoughts about youth on the bench in Broward County?
It's necessary, and it's due for youth on the bench. Let's not forsake youth. I'll tell you, I've tried over 100 trials to verdict in seven years. What I did in seven years, it took my opponent 30 years to do, but most importantly, besides the youth, we need a change on the bench. We need dedication, we need service and compassion.
All right. No, 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 if you're going to clap, clap. They got red shirts for a reason. It's fiery around here. You know what? I am going to start with you again, Ms. Early.
Okay.
Ms. Levy Cohen, or excuse me, Judge Levy Cohen said that she'd been in the Circuit Division, excuse me, the Civil Division, Family, Criminal, County, Circuit. You have yet to be a judge. Experience, another 15 seconds. What are your thoughts on experience on the bench versus youth on the bench?
I'm overly qualified. Okay, let's go back to the trials that I've done. That's not only a criminal, but I've tried civil cases. I have my own law practice since 2016. As a solo practitioner, I've tried everything from real estate cases, probate, criminal, civil, circuit, everything from misdemeanor to temple parter.
Thank you.
I have the experience.
Judge Levy Cohen. Judge Levy Cohen, same question for you, and you're the one with the experience, as young as you are.
Thank you. Flattery will get you nowhere. Okay, I have been a lawyer for 35 years, and in those 35 years, I argued at the Florida Supreme Court several times, I wrote a brief to the United States Supreme Court on behalf of the Attorney General's Office. I've tried tons of cases as a lawyer, and at least 70 as a judge. 12 years' experience on the bench. Thank you.
So, I told Mary I would say this, just so everybody knows. There are rules in a courtroom, and there's got to be rules up here. Judges have kicked things back to me because it wasn't right. So, we are going to strictly enforce these rules, but I understand, this is an election. So, give it a round of applause, real quick. Colleen, we're going to get back on schedule, 30 seconds. Judge Levy Cohen, how does your background in what you've done in your professional life so far influence your judicial philosophy?
Okay, well, we don't have judicial philosophies, but I will tell you, I mean, every case that comes before me is an individual case, but what's important to me is the independence of the judiciary. In fact, I'm involved in the Informed Voters Project, where judges are not political, There's no such thing as an Obama judge or a Trump judge. They are neutral arbiters. They are not influenced by politics. They're not influenced by outside pressures or their own personal opinion. The facts and the law, that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Casia Early, you, you have said that, you've said this, I know you've said this, and I am going to put your feet to the fire. How does, how is your judicial philosophy influenced by your background, specifically at one point being incarcerated, and I believe pregnant with your now soon-to-be-18 son?
Well, I do believe that because of my incarceration, it shaped me into the person I am today, because I had to work 10 times harder, not only to prove myself, but oftentimes people like to bring up your past to show it as a negative thing. But that has propelled me to be the top lawyer in the state of Florida. So I know that I will continue my community service from the bench.
Judge Levy Cohen, I know you did a great job at the Supreme Court, by the way. I worked for Judge, Justice Quinns when she was on the bench. So, up there, they, they are, they're very, very good. So I know you've got some good experience up there.
It was scary, but a good experience.
Ms. Early, what do you view as the biggest challenge to the court here, and what would you do if elected to help address those challenges?
All of my, the majority of my 100 trials were in Broward. And one thing I noticed is there's some judges that lack judicial temperament. To put that in layman's terms, there are some rude judges on the bench. The Sun Sentinel actually endorsed me over my opponent because of the lack of judicial temperament my opponent has shown to people in the community. So I implore you to do your research and make sure that the person you're voting into office would treat your mother, your father, your sister, or your brother with the respect. Because just because you have a black robe does not mean that you're better than the community.
Thank you. And again, I'm paying attention to what she is saying. Judge Levy Cohen, temperament on the bench. And it's actually important, and I asked the question last time, pro se with a lawyer, please tell the voting public your feelings on temperament on the bench in respect.
Obviously, temperament on the bench is most important to the people that appear in front of you. I handle small claims. In fact, I did today. I had a docket of probably 50 individuals. And I took the time and the patience to explain to these people who didn't have lawyers what they're going to experience in court. I calmly explained it to them, and they appreciated it. They understood what was happening. I believe that at the thousands of cases that I've handled in 12 years, I have a spotless record, and I believe that I have the proper demeanor to be, to continue and to get reelected. Thank you. Thank you.
Colleen, Ms. Colleen, I know that's the last question, right? Because I was going to ask more. I just want you to know. I'm ready to go. Final 60 seconds for closing arguments. We'll start with Judge Levy Cohen.
Okay. Thank you again. I have been endorsed by several organizations such as Save PAC, the Hispanic Vote, and the Broward Police Benevolent Association. I don't know why I mess that one up all the time, as well as many political leaders in this community, because they've known me for years. I have lived in Broward County for almost 50 years. I'm committed to this community. My family was raised here, and they're raising their children here. Again, I've been married 35 years, and I have been committed to the law, to volunteering for the community, and to upholding fairness and compassion as a judge. I believe that my experience, the way I handle myself in court with respect of everybody and the independence of the judiciary, is that I should be elected for another term. I thank you again, everybody, and have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Early, closing remarks. Oh, I'm sorry, closing argument.
I'll leave it as remarks. So, we can sit up here and tell you anything that you want to hear, but you, being an informed voter, you Google my first and last name, and you Google Marty Cohen and Sun Sentinel. The Sun Sentinel did an extensive investigation. They endorsed a former criminal, only because they didn't judge me for what I did 18 years ago. They judged me for what I've been doing for the past 18 years for my community. As a private attorney, I've taken so many pro bono cases. My former supervisor, Help Me Howard, Howard Finkelstein, has advocated on behalf of the community as well as myself. So when you think about who you're going to vote for, either myself or my opponent, make sure you make that right decision, because Broward County needs to see justice on the bench, the proper judicial temperament, and empathy. My name is Casia Early, and I want everyone to vote early for Early. Thank you.
You have two excellent candidates up here. Our county will do great once one of them are on the bench. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
And ask these two questions. I, I feel like they got more.
I have a lot to say.
County Court 26. Next up, Circuit Court Group 9, 17-9, Ms. Alperstein and Judge Gunderson. DJ. Disco, disco. It was good. I wasn't born yet, but it was good. I mean, it brought hip-hop in. I mean, I like hip-hop. He had black Jays on. You all didn't see that? So we're going to do opening remarks. First, Judge Gunderson.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. I am Circuit Court Judge Andre Russ Gunderson, and I am your Circuit Judge in Group 9. Now, more than ever, experience matters. Not just like legal experience, it's about life experience. When my marriage ended, I was a single parent with a high school education and a two-year-old and a four-year-old to raise. I know what it's like to face hard times and persevere. It is that life experience that I bring to the bench with almost over 29 years' legal experience, both as an attorney and as a judge. It is that experience that I'm able to use to show compassion within the bounds of the law. Now, not everyone is going to be happy with my ruling, but I rule fairly and with compassion within the bounds of the law. So, I'm very involved in the community. I sat on the organizing committee to help create the first Veterans Court for Broward County. I took the first case with Mission United Veterans Pro Bono Program. I'm involved with other community organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Ms. Alperstein.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lauren Alperstein, and I'm proud to be running for Broward County Circuit Court Judge, Group 9. Becoming a judge has been a professional goal of mine for a long time. I'm proud to have practiced family law with a law firm of Boy Schiller-Flexner in Hollywood for 14 years. I'm also a court-appointed guardian of light on, which I do most of those cases for free, no charge to the community. But the work that I'm most proud of, in addition to being a mom of two children, is I was named Attorney of the Year from Legal Aid of Broward County last year in recognition of all the pro bono, so free legal services, both in the family law world and as well as landlord/tenant cases that I do in the community. And I love the practice of law, but I love public service. This is the community I was raised in, that I'm raising my family in with my husband. I've given back to the community, and becoming a judge is an extension of my DNA, and we need judges who are caring, compassionate, who understand and respect due process, and who are going to treat everybody who comes before them with fairness, equality, and respect.
Thank you, Ms. Alperstein. We're going to start with you, Judge Gunderson. Again, in your opening statements, I'm going to get everybody in their opening statements. I'm not even following the script, just the time. So you said you've been through hard times, you have life experience, and you also use that experience on the bench to show compassion to those that come in front of you. You're in the Circuit, Circuit Court Division.
I, I'm in, I'm a Circuit Court Judge.
Yes, you're a Circuit Court Judge. You're not a County Court Judge. That is different, and everyone needs to know, that is distinctly different. So, how do you use that in, when approaching the community when someone comes in front of you?
Well, Circuit Court is the highest trial-level court, so a lot of times, the individuals that come before the court, you have attorneys, and, but the pro se's have a more challenging time because the laws are a lot more complex. I've been honored to serve on the family bench and also on the, right now, the residential foreclosure bench. Those are two of the most traumatizing events in a family's life, and it is my life experience that, understanding those hard times and facing those hard times, that I do bring to the bench and am able to show that compassion, because I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen, you're going to hate me. I need 15 more seconds. I'm so sorry. I want to hit you on this again, because one of the things that you said is that you, it's not on the highest court bench, but pro se's have, 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 have a challenge, just like the last judicial candidates that came up. How are you going to use judicial temperament, or do you use judicial temperament in dealing with pro se's versus individuals with attorneys?
Well, when pro se's come before me, I always make sure that they understand what is going to the process, whether it's case management or motion calendar, the order that things go. And then I always review their motions beforehand. I ask them if they have anything in addition. But I always explain what is happening. I explain the law.
Thank you. Excellent. Ms. Alperstein, you have 45 seconds to answer both of those questions, and Colleen is going to kill me, so I'm going to talk for like two more seconds. But, life experience, how will compassion come into the way that you, you engage in your judicial philosophy? And finally, dealing with pro se's versus people with attorneys?
Sure. So, what most people don't know is that when I was seven years old, my parents got divorced. It was a very traumatic time in my life, and in a weird, roundabout way, that's how I ended up in family law. So for 14 years, I have used my own personal experience as a child who went through a very traumatic situation and helped counsel my clients and try and help, help them through very difficult times. In light of all the pro bono work that I do, I also used to teach pro se litigants at the courthouse when I started practicing how to navigate their way through their divorce cases and their paternity actions. So dealing with pro se litigants and having compassion is an extension of who I am and a part of my DNA.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're going to hop right back into the next one. It's going to be 15 seconds, youth versus experience, because that's what you spoke about in your opening statement. Do you believe that you can have youth and experience when coming into the position of the highest trial court in Broward County?
Definitely, and I'm proud to say that I have both. I have been trained by some of the best lawyers, including a past Florida bar president, who have mentored me and showed me the way to practice law the right way, which is working hard and zealously advocating for your clients, but remembering where you come from and giving back to the community.
Thank you. And we're going to keep it tight again. Judge Gunderson, you have 15 seconds. Please, can you have youth and experience in a position like this?
Well, I believe that life experience is invaluable. You can't learn that in a book. You can't learn it in school. Over my almost 30 years in the legal profession, I've done criminal prosecution, criminal defense, I've done jury trials, domestic violence, family law.
Thank you. Got to keep it tight, 15. Ms. Colleen's going to kill me. All right.
She won't kill you. Don't worry.
So...
You have a lot of lawyers here to help you.
I know. I appreciate that. The last question, actually, what do you view as your biggest challenge to, the biggest challenge to the court here, and what would you do if elected to address these challenges, Judge?
Well, I am elected, and I am the sitting judge, so...
You have to get reelected, though.
Re-elected, yes. Right now, sitting on the foreclosure bench, what I've seen is one of the biggest, biggest challenges is both affordability in the legal profession, but also affordable housing. I know that I'm dealing with people that are, because of the pandemic and because of economic situations, facing the loss of their home. And that is not a situation I brought about, but under the law, that is the situation they're facing. So yes, that is an issue.
Thank you. I'm actually going to switch your question up, because the judge brought up the issue of foreclosures twice. So, if you're elected in this position, this may be something you're dealing with. And our country potentially is going into a recession, so 30 seconds. How would you, how does your judicial philosophy direct the way that you would direct a court in that way, dealing with those issues?
I think it goes back to compassion and treating everybody who comes before you with dignity and respect. This courtroom does not belong to any of the judges. It belongs to the people. And everybody deserves to walk into that courtroom and have their due process rights protected, which means that everybody has the opportunity to be heard. So even if I don't agree or don't rule in somebody's favor, they will always be treated with respect. Their voice will be heard, and they'll walk in that courtroom as a human being and leave the same way.
Excellent. Thank you. Closing statements. Ms. Gunderson. Excuse me, Judge Gunderson, I apologize.
I, thank you. I have spent over 20 years involved with our diverse community in Broward County, working with organizations, dealing with economically challenged families, veterans, and legal, the legal profession. As I stated, I helped create the first Veterans Court, worked with Mission United, I work with the Dana Beach Lions Club. It is that community involvement that has created the support and the groundswell that I have in the community. The Sun Sentinel said that I didn't have the money, that lawyer's money meant more than people's votes. But in 2016, I was elected by almost 360, 350,000 voters in Broward County because of that community's support. And I've maintained that community's support, as you can see, by being endorsed by the PBA, the Broward Teachers Union, Engage, and the diverse community. And I look for your support in re-electing Judge Gunderson.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Ms. Alperstein, closing statement.
Thank you. Well, thank you again, everybody. Becoming a judge is really a dream of mine and giving back to the community that I was raised in, that has been so good to me and my family, and my roots are here. And I am proud of the endorsements I've received. I'm proud to receive the endorsement of the Sun Sentinel, and that's not just because of the support that I have from the legal community, both my opposing counsel, both attorneys who appear before my opponent, and lawyers in the community who know who I am. But I'm also proud to receive the endorsement of five past Florida bar presidents, members of the community, members of the legal community, and regular people who know me and who know my passion for the community and what I'm involved in. I'm proud to be on the Board of the Jewish Federation of Broward County, as well as the Children's Literacy Advisory Council of Broward County, which helps dismantle systemic racism in our public school systems. And I really would love your support. And please remember, Alperstein, on August 23rd, and also early voting. Again, I really, I love this community, and this is a way for me to pay it forward and give back and make sure that everyone is treated with dignity and respect and that people's due process rights are protected.
Thank you. Give a round of applause to these excellent judicial candidates. And look at the judge's nails. Circuit Court Group 14, Mr. Ariaza and Judge Horry. All right, I'm going to stick to the script this time. I, I promise, I'm going to stick to the script. I am. Well, I'm just getting to the time. So, we have two candidates here for Circuit Court Group 14, Mr. Ariaza and Judge Horry. Judge Horry, 60 seconds, opening statement, please.
Good evening. My name is Bill Howery. The last name's H-A-U-R-Y, Group 14. It has been my privilege, and it is a privilege, to be a Circuit Court Judge for the last 14 years. I started in 2008. I was re-elected in 2010 without opposition. I was re-elected in 2016, again, without opposition. I've been endorsed by the Hispanic Vote, by the Sun Sentinel, by the Fraternal Order of Police, by the Broward County PBA, by the Broward County Council of Professional Firefighters, by the AFL-CIO, by the Puerto Rican Bar Association of Florida, and also by Engage Action. I have been named as the Judge of the Year by the American Board of Trial Advocates, and I've also received the President's Award by the Broward County Bar Association, and I look forward to speaking with you further. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ariaza, 60 seconds.
Good evening. My name is Alex Ariaza, and I'm also running for Circuit Court Judge, Group 14. Difference with me is, I grew up in this neighborhood. I went to Stranahan High School. I went to Broward Community College, and I went to Nova Law School. I've been here for the majority part of my life. I was raised by a single mother with my brother, went on to become a lawyer. I've tried over 10,000 cases, not tried, I'm sorry, I've handled over, over 10, over 10,000 cases. And the difference is, is that I love being a lawyer, and I'm running for judge because I saw this disconnect and the lack of empathy in the court, and it needed to be addressed. And I'll end with this. When the other candidates were talking about the County Court... When the other candidates were talking about the county court being the people's court, that's not true, okay? Because that whole courthouse belongs to the people of Broward County. They are our boss.
Thank you. So again, I'm going to play off of your opening statements. And experience is really a note in this. Let's start with you, Judge. Your experience on the bench, how is that going to help continue to push you down the road, rather than Mr. Ariaza's experience as an attorney in the community whose hopes to be on the bench?
I've also been an attorney for approximately 25 years before I took the bench, so I certainly understand both sides. I've had the experience for the last 14 years. Certainly, I work hard, I'm prepared, I treat everybody with respect. I intend to continue to do so. So I think that has certainly been a big help. I certainly have a lot of support from the community in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ariaza, similar question, but of your experience. How is your experience as an attorney, how will it influence you and your judicial philosophy on the bench?
That's very simple, because I'm on the receiving end. My clients, I'm up there protecting my clients, and I see the way the judges behave and the lack of empathy in the court. And you see sitting judges up here telling you how everything is fine and how wonderful job. But think about this, okay? We wouldn't be up here as candidates if everything was so rosy.
He didn't even need to put up the red sign, okay? Well, thank you. Mr. Ariaza, I'm going to stick with you for a second. It's another 30-second question. I'm not going to mess with the time, I told you. Three years ago, before the pandemic, an article came out, and I believe the Tampa Bay Times, I believe it was, that said Broward County, the state attorney's office, put more people in jail for drug crimes than any other county in the state of Florida. Judge Horry has been on the civil bench and the criminal bench. If you're a Circuit Court Judge, you may be on the criminal bench and the Circuit Court bench. So please, how does your judicial philosophy influence the way that you will actually practice on the bench?
The problem, when you talk about a judicial philosophy, I'll tell you right now, I don't have one, and you should not have one as a judge. And I understand that there's groups up there with certain philosophies, but you're supposed to hear everybody out and listen on each case-by-case basis. This problem with the drug arrests, the problem is, again, like the other, I'll say the same thing the other candidates were saying. There's a lack of empathy, there's a disconnect. That the disconnect has now resulted in working-class people, like my mother, like people that I represent, are now paying for it. And that is a lack, that is a disconnect on the part of the court.
Judge Horry, same question to you. You've seen it from the bench itself.
Yes, we have. When I started in 2008, I started in drug court and mental health court. And probably the most gratifying experience that I have had as a judge has been in drug court, where you have an opportunity for a possession case. If you come in, successfully complete the program, do what you're supposed to do, you can have your charge dismissed. I've certainly heard more than a few defendants say that the best thing that ever happened to them was getting arrested, because it gave them an opportunity to come in and get the help that they needed. Certainly, it's, I guess we'll talk about that later maybe.
Thank you. You know what? I'm not going to do 15 seconds. It's still 30 seconds, but I'm going to switch the question up based on what Judge Horry said. And I've heard this, I was a prosecutor for many, many years, and I heard this as a prosecutor, and I heard it from some judges as well. Judge Horry just said, "One of the best things that ever happened to me was getting arrested because the system helped him get through." So my question is, share your vision for the future of the judicial system, keeping that in mind, of what I just said. Mr. Ariaza, I apologize.
Okay, what was the question for you?
You. It was for you.
I didn't have to repeat it. I thought it was for you.
No worries. And I'll be very, very quick. Share your vision of the judicial philosophy, your, excuse me, your vision for the future of the judicial system based on what I just said.
The future of the judicial system is, you have to get back to understanding this, okay? This is very simple. That courthouse belongs to the people of Broward County. We don't work for judges. Judges work for the people. And they, once you start with that, you show the empathy, you show the respect you need to, things will move along. Believe it or not, the breakdown starts there. The disconnect is the whole basis, the whole problem to begin with. When judges come up here and tell you that everything is okay, it's not okay.
Thank you. Judge Horry, I'm going to switch it up for you just a second, because hopefully I can get this question out the right way. Empathy, respect, we've heard all the judicial candidates talk about empathy, respect, empathy, respect. How does that play into the application of the law? And can that play into the application of the law?
Certainly, you need to be respectful at all times. Certainly, you can have empathy, but at the same time, the function of the court, the judge, is making determination as to what the facts are. And once you determine what the facts are, to apply the laws to those facts. And there really shouldn't be any outside considerations. Empathy, you can certainly understand what's going on. It may be a role, if you have some discretion in terms of sentencing, but otherwise, pretty much everybody is subject to the same rules that apply to everybody.
Thank you. And I'm going to stick with you, Judge. And I know I always say your name, Judge Horry. Pronounce your name again, Howery.
Howery.
I apologize, Judge.
How are you?
How are you? I'm doing well. You're currently on the bench. So what do you view, and we want an honest answer. What do you view as the biggest challenge to the court in Broward County today?
Well, right now, I think there are two challenges. On the civil side, the Supreme Court came out with several different case management rules within the last year and a half, and has really put a lot of pressure on both the judges and the civil litigants. On the other side of the building, the North Building, the criminal side, they have been subject to quite a backlog from the pandemic. And I think moving those cases through going forward is certainly going to be a huge challenge.
Mr. Ariaza, I'm going to ask you the same question. What is your view as to the biggest, excuse me, the biggest challenges on the court? But what I heard Judge Howery say is, procedure, procedure, procedure. Do you believe that?
Absolutely not. When you're in a situation with, like you're in court, the biggest problem that you have in court is the disconnect. Like I said, I've been a lawyer for a very long time. I love being a lawyer, but I want to address that disconnect problem. And when Judge Horry says, "This is a huge difference between us," it's not, the outside factors affect everybody in this room and people in the community. You have to take them into account.
Thank you. I wish I could ask more questions. I know I can't. I really know I can't. We're stuck on time. But please, ask them more questions when they get off the stage. Closing arguments. Judge Horry.
When I became a judge in 2008, I made a promise to the people of Broward County. That promise was to work to improve the administration of justice in Broward County. I think I've served in almost every division in the courthouse, and I believe that I have honored that promise. I have been fair, I've been prepared, and I've treated everybody with respect. My promise to you is that I will continue to work to improve the administration of justice in Broward County. You can rely on that promise, because that is exactly what I've done for the last 14 years. I thank you for your time this evening. If you would like some additional information, you can certainly go to www.reelect, re hyphen elect joehowery.com. So thank you again. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration.
Efficient. Mr. Ariaza, 60 seconds for closing arguments.
Ladies and gentlemen, the reason that I'm running for judge is because of this huge disconnect between the bench and the people of Broward County. They actually believe that these people are there for their pleasure, and they're not. We're, the judges are there to serve the people. You need to address the disconnect. You need to take into account everybody's background. Like, I will say it again, and the county court candidates were all saying that that's the people's court. That Broward County courthouse, every single division, every circuit county and every other division is the people's court. That belongs to you. You run the show. So I want you to look, check both of us out. Look at our backgrounds. And I ask you to, I ask you for the only endorsement that matters, and that's your vote. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. And that concludes this session. Please ask these candidates questions when they get off the stage.
Folks, thank you.
All right, no more 15-second questions. I've been informed. All right. Now we welcome up Circuit Court Group 23, Senator Farmar, Ms. Sokoloff, and Ms. Williams. A candidate all the way over. Talking too much. So we're going to jump right in, and we're going to start with Ms. Williams. Ladies first. Ms. Williams, 60 seconds, opening statement.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I am Tanya Maria Williams, and I want to be your next Circuit Court Judge. My journey to the bench started at 11:00, because I was sitting in the back of a courtroom as a kid, when a judge looked at my father, who was standing at the podium as a defendant, looked at my family and I in the back and said, "I know you want him home for Christmas, but that's not going to happen." That was my experience on the other side of the bench. And I made a decision that no other little 11-year-old girl would ever have that feeling if I had something to do about it. And the next little 11-year-old girl would be able to see herself reflected on that bench. So here I am, 20 years' experience, civil and criminal experience, and I even built a company teaching lawyers how to do trials, because my goal is to better the system from the inside.
Thank you. Ms. Sokoloff.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Rhoda Sokoloff, and I'm running for Circuit Court Judge in Group 23. I've been practicing law for 22 years. Actually, worked for attorneys for about 25 years prior to going to law school. I am AV-rated, which is the highest rating an attorney can get in legal ability and ethics. And your peers vote on that for you. I'm asking for your vote on August 23rd. Rhoda Sokoloff, for Circuit Court Judge, and I'll tell you more with my 15 seconds.
Not this time. Mr. Farmar, 60 seconds.
Thank you, David, and thank you, everybody. Yes, I am Gary Farmer. Many of you know me as the current senator in the 34th District, Broward County. You know, I ran for the Senate. I always had a calling and felt in my heart the desire to do public service. And I went to Tallahassee 15 years ago to provide a voice to the voiceless. The process was a mess up there, and I ended up running for office myself for a simple reason. I wanted to help people. I wanted to help the little guy and the little gal. Unfortunately, things have devolved so much in that process that I just don't feel I can do that anymore. I'm a lifelong resident of Broward County, born in Holy Cross Hospital, went to Little Flower Elementary in Hollywood, graduated from South Broward High School in Hollywood, been here all my life. You've seen my commercials, probably. I grew up around the law. I was six years old when my dad started law school, so my dying life was cast early. I'll tell you a little bit more of my experience and my endorsements as we go forward, but I'm here for one reason and one reason only. I care about the judiciary and I want to help people.
Thank you. We're going to start with you, Mr. Farmer. You've already said why you are running for this position, because you are also a senator, a sitting senator, correct?
Yes, sir.
So go a little bit deeper for 30 seconds.
Well, as I said, you know, I became a senator because of my work as a volunteer advocate, really on access to court issues. I've done consumer protection work all my life. And I've always believed that the judiciary is our most important branch. I carry the Constitution with me every day, okay? It's under attack right now. And the judiciary is a great equalizer. It's where David can take on Goliath and win. And I want to be part of that process. It's got to be fair access to the judiciary for anybody to have an opportunity to obtain that justice. And that's what I will do each and every day in my courtroom.
Ms. Williams, I saw you smiling. You pulled out the Constitution.
He sure did.
So I want you to go a level deeper in your life experience, how that life experience is going to influence your philosophy as a judicial, as a judge, excuse me.
So actually, I'll tell you how that life experience influenced my decisions as a prosecutor, because I started as a prosecutor in Orlando 20 years ago. And I decided that these were not statistics, these were people, and they should be treated fairly. And in treating someone fairly, you look at the facts and the circumstances. You measure that. You treat everyone the same, no matter what they look like, where they come from, or who they are. You also treat them with compassion, because having been on the other side of the bench, I know this is their worst day.
Thank you. Ms. Sokoloff, and hopefully.
Is it 15 seconds or 30?
30. It's 30. 30 seconds. We're staying on task. So again, experience, compassion, all of these words people are saying, nice fluffy words. But tell us how your professional and life experience influences your judicial philosophy if you are elected.
Great question. So I wanted to be a lawyer and ultimately a judge since I was 16. I'm the daughter of Holocaust survivors, so I certainly learned all about compassion and empathy. I have a son who is severely disabled. There again, you have empathy. I've been involved in the community in mental health with Kiwanis and the Dana Lions Club. I offer my time teaching a class to family members who have relatives that suffer from mental illness and drug addiction. My life experience.
Thank you so much. You know, I'm going to stick with you for 30 more seconds, okay? And this is a good 30 seconds, on task. So you talked about mental health and drug abuse. In our community, especially coming out of COVID, we see commercials all over the page for people searching for assistance in those ways. What will you do on the bench, or answer this question, what will you do on the bench to help relieve our community of some of these ailments?
Well, first of all, I have to be careful, because I can't answer a question of what I would do on the bench. We're not allowed to answer those questions. But I certainly would be impartial. I would certainly listen to all the facts and apply the law as is necessary. But I can't directly answer that question.
That is an excellent answer, which is why we are going to go to Mr. Farmar, mental health court, drug court, veterans court. These are criminal courts right now, and Ms. Williams was a prosecutor. Understanding what we are coming out of as a complete country and a world, as a judge, what do you believe your position is if you were able to affect those specific courts?
Well, you know, it's been alluded to by some of the prior candidates. We've talked about empathy and compassion. You look it up, those are two of the most important traits you need to have for your own mental health, gratitude, empathy. I've been honored by Ms. Sokoloff's NAMI group. I'm on the current board of the Broward Behavioral Health Coalition. I've done numerous dependency cases. People are in special need that have mental health problems. We don't have enough resources at all. And so a lot of it falls on the bench. And one of the things you can do as a judge is find them those resources.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, I'm going to switch it up just a little bit. We're going to stay same on task. You've been in these types of courtrooms as a prosecutor.
Yes.
And you understand that sometimes people consider the jailhouse to just be a place for putting people with drug addictions and mental health concerns. So as a judge, what do you believe your role is in tampering some of that? If you can answer the question.
So as Rhoda said, there are certain questions we can't answer, but here's what I think about that. There are duties and responsibilities that belong to our police departments, our sheriffs, and our state attorney. Those are their responsibilities and what they charge and how they charge it. Our responsibility is to treat this person like a person. I had a schizophrenic defendant when I was a prosecutor, and everyone else would have just put him in jail. But I helped that PD find a bed for him, because that's what he needed, was treatment.
Thank you. Ms. Sokoloff. Last thing. I know your time got cut off a little bit about your life experience and how that will affect your judicial philosophy. I actually want you to finish that.
I'm trying to remember where I left off.
My life experience.
I will tell you this, and a lot of the candidates here said they don't have a judicial philosophy, but I do. I believe that you have to vote for somebody who has independent thinking, who's impartial, who has respect for the litigants that come before you, who has the right demeanor. And I believe that you need to keep politics out of the courthouse and off of the bench.
Thank you. Mr. Farmer, I'm going to come over to you. You were born in Broward County. Your father was a lawyer. Your father was a judge as well, and you are vying to be the next Circuit Court Judge in this division. How does that influence your purpose of running for office? Does that influence your purpose for running for office?
It's my inspiration. I mean, you've seen the commercials, most likely. My father's my hero. He was a high school dropout, joined the Marine Corps, went off to Korea, came back, met my mom. She saw more in him. She pushed him to do more. He went to what was then Broward Junior College. Many of you remember that. Was in FAU's second graduating class, and I was in first grade when he started law school. I took the bus to the university and sat in the back of his classrooms. In the summer, when he was a law clerk, I watched his trials. That was my summer camp. I was born and raised to do this.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, you said you were a prosecutor in Orlando. I was a prosecutor in Broward County.
I know.
So, you've been on one side.
Yep.
Please tell the audience if you've been on the other side and what your experience on the civil side, because if you are a judge, if you're elected, you won't just be in one division. You may be in family, you may be in criminal, you may be in anything else.
Right. So I have not been a, well, actually, I have not done criminal defense as my primary practice area. I have done defense cases where I thought I needed to help the lawyer who had the case. I have done everything except probate. I have done a family law case with a client of mine because I built a company teaching lawyers how to do trials, and she wanted help, so I've done that. I'm a civil trial attorney, senior trial attorney at my office now, where, again, I still teach lawyers how to do trials and I'm lead counsel on all the cases.
Thank you. Closing arguments, Ms. Sokoloff.
Any remarks?
Remarks, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm Rhoda Sokoloff. It's a name you know and trust. I'm asking for your vote on August 23rd. Based on my life experience, my work experience, and my community involvement, I have the most to offer on the bench. I will, I promise you this, I will have compassion, I will follow the law, I will listen to all the facts, I will be impartial, and you will not get a complaint about my demeanor. So I'm asking again, vote for Rhoda Sokoloff on August 23rd for a Circuit Court Judge in Group 23.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, 60 seconds.
I may not be from Broward County, but I am Broward County. I am that daughter of a single mother who did everything she needed to do to make sure that her kids could eat at night. I am of Caribbean descent, like my family in Lauderdale. I am that person, that owner of a business that didn't know what was going to happen when the pandemic hit. So I may not be from Broward County, but I am Broward County, and I am asking Broward County to support me. I have spent half of my adult life in this county. I went to law school in this county. I taught law school, the same one I went to. I taught at Nova for six years because, like I told you in the beginning, I'm trying to better this system from the inside. I'm asking you to give me that opportunity. That 11-year-old girl is on your ballot. Darken the circle next to her name. Thank you.
Senator Farmar, 60 seconds.
Thank you, David, and thank you to the association, Madam President, the whole group. It's so important to do these forums. Nobody knows about judges or judicial candidates. I've been practicing for 31 years, almost all of them in Broward County. I told you, I've been born and raised here. I've handled some of the most complicated cases in Florida, including, we talked about mental health. I took a drug companies to task for peddling very dangerous drugs for unapproved uses. I've been endorsed not only by the Sun Sentinel, by the firefighters, by the teachers, by the AFL-CIO, but I can proudly say that I'm endorsed by both FOP, PBA, and by noted civil rights attorney Ben Crump. I think that speaks to my fight, my lifelong fight and passion for fairness, justice, and equality. And I am Broward County. I've been here all my life. I've been registered to vote here all my life. I didn't just register to vote in June. I've been doing this. I've been working in the community, turkey giveaways. We just did another backpack giveaway this weekend. I have given to this community, and I now want to serve this community as the next judge on the bench in Broward County. Thank you.
Thank you. Give it up for everybody on stage. We all know what turkey giveaways are. Next up, the final group. Ms. Mastarino. She told me I knew I was going to- Ms. Hamilton, Mastarigo. And Ms. Kistner. She told me outside. And I go to the ceiling. Well, we're going to start with Ms. Kistner. 60 seconds, opening statement.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. To tell you a little bit about myself, my name is Denise Kistner, and I'm running for, to be your next Circuit Court Judge in Group 51. This is a little different than some of the other groups. There's no incumbent judge in this. We're all, I think, first time, at least, running a campaign, and I think what sets me aside from the other candidates is my experience as a trial attorney here in Broward County. Everything I've done as an attorney has brought me to this point, and it is the trial experience that I've had as a dependency attorney, which is when DCF gets involved and removes children from their parents because of abuse. It's my experience in dealing with people in those situations that have mental health problems, that have substance abuse problems, who have cognitive issues, financial issues, things that have limited them but have brought them to the courtroom, and it's very important for a judge to know how those people got there and that they have a story.
Thank you. Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tamar Hamilton, and I am running to be your next Circuit Court Judge in Broward County, Group 51. I am married with an adult daughter and a teenage son. The diversity of my practice in Broward County, in the areas of probate, wills, trusts, dealing with real estate transactional and litigation matters, and serving as an educator in my community, is what has prepared me for this journey. It is that which has prepared me and developed the passion within me for the legal profession and to serve my community. I believe I am the kind of judge Broward County is looking for, so I'm here to ask for your support on my journey to the bench. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mastarigo.
That was beautifully said, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you. I'm sorry, I know him. Lorena Mastarigo. I have been an attorney for 23 years in Broward County. I know you hear us all talk about our experience, and part of the reason we talk about our experience is because, as an attorney of 23 years, when we walk into that courtroom, we want to make sure that judge knows the law and knows the procedure so that things get done once correctly and it doesn't have to keep going up to the higher courts to correct the mistakes. So I have been in the trenches for 23 years. As an assistant public defender, I have picked juries, meaning talked to my fellow people who come in for jury duty, because I know most of you don't like that, but I have done that for over 50 trials, and my mic died. And, there we go, we're back to that. And I have done over 50 bench trials. I have also practiced in the private sector where the money was much better, but I felt more like a businessperson and not assisting my community. So after my son, who's over there taking pictures of me, so I smile that way, that's why, I went back to public service. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to stick with you for the first questions.
Go for it.
Because you said, "We want judges that know what they're talking about on the bench, that know the law." Please tell the community why that is so important.
It's very frustrating when the wrong decision gets made because the law is not followed. We have case law, so every time a case is decided or it goes up to appeal to the Court of Appeals, it's created, and that's the law besides the law that's created by the Senate. That's the law that has to be passed. I actually train attorneys in my office, so I'm constantly looking up the Florida Supreme case law, the Fourth DCA case law, and then I pass it on and teach it to my attorneys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Same question, Ms. Kistner.
Well, I think it's very important. It's just like anything. I've told people that if you go to a doctor, let's say, and you have a problem with your heart, you don't want to talk to a podiatrist, and the same thing happens in the courtroom. You want somebody who's been in that courtroom and not only knows how to study the law and find out, you know, what it actually says, but knows how the whole system operates and has been there, and they know that they're just one part of that puzzle that brings justice to the people that appear in front of them.
Thank you. Same question.
Thank you. Knowing the law is absolutely important, but even more important is applying the law to the matter before you. As a legal educator and as a practicing attorney, that is what I've been doing for my years of practice and will continue to do when elected as your next, as your Circuit Court Judge.
Excellent answer. Ms. Hamilton, I'm going to stick with you for one second. So, I've asked this a couple of times, but you're going to, if you're elected, you're going to be potentially on the criminal side, family law, civil, you're going to be all over the courthouse, so please talk to us about your experience and how that experience is going to be able to better help you if you get elected on the bench.
Thank you. My experience has been with the people of Broward County. In probate, dealing with wills, I've always had the opportunity to see both sides of the matter, dealing with real estate, be transactional or litigation. I have had to stand as that center post for people to lean on managing that case, rendering decision to both sides, and that is an important quality of a judge.
Thank you. Ms. Mastarigo. So, you are an educator in the PD's office, the public defender's office. How is, how does your experience in the PD's office and your private experience as well affect your ability, or is it going to positively affect your ability being in different types of law, civil, probate, family?
It definitely will, and I'm also an educator. I teach trial advocacy at Nova Law School, and I have been doing it for a few years now. I have practiced in the private sector with family law and in the public sector, and I can tell you, even though the courtrooms look alike, every single courtroom is different. So the experience of having walked into all those different courtrooms, whether it was family law, personal injury under civil and criminal, I think that will help me learn anything new. When I left the public defenders and had to learn family law, I had no problem learning it.
We have two educators up here, Ms. Kistner, so I guarantee that you're an educator. I have a feeling that you're going to say that. But how is your experience in your area of expertise going to be able to effectuate the courtroom or any level of the law that you want?
Well, I've been practicing here in Broward County for almost 27 years, and for the majority of that time, I've had my own practice, and so I am not doing anything different than I've done all of those years. So I have been a family law attorney, which has put me in the trial courtroom, dealing with all the areas of family law. I've been a dependency attorney. In both of those areas, there's crossover where my clients have had companion cases in criminal court, whether they're a juvenile that I'm representing in dependency or an adult, so I've had to be aware of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to stick with you again, Ms. Kistner. What do you believe the biggest challenges of the courthouse are right now with your 23 years of experience in the courthouse, girl?
Almost 27.
Almost 27, I apologize. I don't want to do that. That's almost 30. So, what do you believe the biggest challenges are?
You know, some of them were addressed earlier, so I'd look at it a little bit different. I think it's time and money, and the way I look at it in that fashion is that the courts don't always have the time to give everybody that they're expecting in the courtroom. One of the hardest things is to explain to a client when you want to have something resolved is that the hearing's coming in six months. And then the money is the issue, and the money is how much money do people have to be able to litigate things, and how does that affect their outcome? And as a judge, I hope to make sure that that doesn't affect their outcome.
Thank you, Ms. Mastarigo. Time and money, time and money. You were a public defender and also, and on the civil side, private sector. So you've seen it. You've seen the business side, as you said. Also, you've seen people without the ability to pay. So how does that affect your judicial philosophy if you're elected?
I think it's taught me how to actually listen better and be more patient. Money should not rule that courthouse. The person that walks in with more money should not be the winner just because they walk in with more money. I think we need to restore the faith in that courthouse, and it's as simple things as the judge actually taking the time to explain their decision. I think judges are too quick to just sign that order and leave it up to the attorneys to explain, and that, again, disconnects the public from the bench and does not give it faith.
This is the last question, guys. It's a good one. Ms. Hamilton, what is your view on the biggest challenge? What do you believe the biggest challenges of the courthouse are, and how, if elected, will you effectuate, in your position, the change that you're looking for on the bench?
Thank you. I believe one of the biggest challenge is case management. I believe a judge's role is really, that judge is a manager of cases. How do I effectuate that? That's what I have been doing. Every area of my practice has prepared me to manage cases despite the results, working with both parties, plaintiffs and defendants, being that center post, maintaining judicial temperament, being a professional, and serving the community.
Thank you. Final 60 seconds, closing remarks. Ms. Kistner.
Thank you again for having us this evening. I've always wanted to be a judge, and it was something I decided when I was 17. I was going to law school, and I was going to do this. So like I said earlier, everything I've done has led me to this point. I've represented underrepresented communities. I have helped people through their worst day when their, you know, their marriage is breaking up. I want to be able to continue to serve the Broward County residents now from the bench and help to make sure that in certain areas, we talked about being, having compassion, that we help people in a way that this is not a revolving door, that we make sure we resolve their issues, that they have fairness, that they don't get treated differently because of how much money they have, because of what neighborhood they came from, whether they have an attorney or not. All of those things are very important to be able to give people the due process that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mastarigos, 60 seconds.
60 seconds. I am an immigrant. I moved to the U.S. when I was eight years old, knowing my numbers and my colors only in English. My dad brought us here to give the four children a better life, and I am so thankful to the U.S. every single day, and when I took that oath of a citizen, I cried. I understand all walks of life. I have not only the experience in the courtroom but in the community, from coaching my kids in soccer, basketball, baseball, to being involved with my church, to being involved in the school. I have been the Secretary of the Parent Resource Organization for two years, the treasurer, and I finished my presidency in May. I am always involved in the community. I help Big Mama with Team of Life, and all of that is what I'm going to bring to the bench. I have dealt with people with mental illness and people with drug problems. And to appease my child, I have been endorsed by the Sun Sentinel, the Safe Pact, M. Gage, the Fraternal Order of Police, the Broward Police Benevolance, and AFL-CIO. I've gotten all the endorsements.
Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you. Broward County, I know the law. I have practiced the law. What I didn't know is how big this county was. And the challenge came when I had to get out of that law office, put on those sneakers, those flats, and make my way throughout Broward County. It has been one of the most meaningful journey of my life. In Broward County, I am ready to serve you as your next Circuit Court Judge, so I ask that you go out and vote. Early voting starts August 13th, and election day is August 23rd. Elect Tamar Hamilton to be your next Circuit Court Judge in Group 51. Thank you.
Three excellent candidates. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Dear audience, what's happening? Okay, we have, first of all, we have a lost cellphone. If you have a cellphone, take a look at your cellphone, make sure that it's yours. If not, bring it to me. Okay, that concludes our judicial portion of the candidate forum. A round of applause for our terrific moderator, David Kennedy.
Sorry for going over, guys.
It's been my extreme pleasure to get to know him. Also, a round of applause for all the candidates. I think most of them have left to go on to another venue. Each one of them deserves our respect. Now, if you would, please quickly go- Now, if you would, please quickly go down the hall, put some pizza on a plate, and come back. We were going to have a breakdown there, but we're, we have some time constraints now. We want you to just go down there, go, get some pizza, bring it back. So right now, it is seven?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-seven, I don't know what it is, seven eighteen? We're going to be back in 10 minutes. So if you would, just quickly go get some food and come back. I'd appreciate it.
Alex, don't go over the time. They got me. I went over.
There's a lot of pizza down there, so don't be shy. Great job. Kelly, go get some pizza. You too. Great job, man. Have a good show. Oh, I can get down. I'm good. I'm good. My mic still on? My mic still on? It's off. It's off. No, it's off. He turned, he turned it off. Dear audience, please take your seats. All of you, I'm good. All right, let's get everybody in here and let's get this show on the road. All right, dear audience, welcome back. I'm going to ask you to do two things. I did this earlier, but if you weren't here, please turn the sound off on your cellphones. It's fine to do it right now, right in front of me. I appreciate that. Second, we brought in a lot of stuff, pizza plates, glasses, stuff like that. When you leave, please pick up your trash and throw it in the garbage so that I don't have to. So I appreciate that. All right. I want to introduce our next moderator for our school board candidates, Mr. Alex Price. Alex's resume is quite impressive. Please read his bio in the program. There is so much to get him to the point where he is. Alex, he's currently the National Director of Community Investment for the Office Depot Corporation. We all know Office Depot. At Office Depot, he has started several volunteer initiatives engaging 50,000 associates. I have to say that again, 50,000. That is a lot of people. These include, but are not limited to, programs like Start Proud, Office Depot's Back to School Program, and Depot Day of Service, which is Office Depot's North American, again, I repeat myself, North American wide day of a community impact. We're fortunate to have him here, so please welcome Alex, and it's all yours.
Thanks, Mary. It's a, it's a real honor to be here tonight. We're here for an extremely important reason. It is democracy at its very core. It is, I feel very honored to be in this, in this room tonight. I, I get to serve, my, my favorite extracurricular activity, my only hobby, is serving on the, the board of- We're here for an extremely important reason, it is democracy at its very core. It is, I feel very honored to be in this room tonight. I get to serve, my favorite extracurricular activity, my only hobby, is serving on the Board of the Broward Education Foundation. And so, this hits home, this is, it's very home to my heart. While I didn't go to Broward County Public Schools, I married in. I married up and I married in. Met my wife in New York City and she brought me down here immediately. She's a Piper High graduate of 2000, 2000? There's always a Piper High bangle in the room. I always hear a woo-woo, at least one. And that came out here, so thank you. And so, I think we know the importance of why we're here, but just a little background for anyone who this might be useful for. Broward County School Board is elected to oversee the public schools of Broward County, of course. There are nine members that serve on the Board, seven Board members hail from their specific geographic districts, and two seats, eight and nine, are elected at large. We all know that this is the sixth largest school district in the nation, the second largest in the great state of Florida. And what happens here matters, obviously here in the state, but nationally. We are a bellwether, critical leadership here. Just to put it in, you know, our company, our education is at our heart, and we know that when you have the sixth largest district right in your backyard, you need to go no further than Broward County Public Schools to be able to make a national difference in the state of education. So, without further ado, I want to ask our candidates here for district, for our at-large District Eight candidates to come join us on stage, if you'll join me with a round of applause and thanking them for not only making the time this evening, but their heart to serve, their dedication to the teachers and youth of this great county. And thank you all so much. Everybody is getting comfortable and set. Welcome, and thank you for your heart to serve the youth and the teachers and everyone here in this amazing school district. We're going to begin with opening remarks, of course, these will be 60 seconds in duration. We're going to start with, if it's okay, to use first names?
Sure.
I'm a first-name kind of guy. We're going to start with Raymond, followed by Donna and Alan. So, Raymond, if you would.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
No, 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 good evening.
Good evening.
See, I'm young, and I believe that there should be energy in politics, so we're going to do it again, good evening.
Evening.
Shirley, my name is Raymond Attarly III, and I'm the youngest Afro-Latino and African-American male to ever run for school board in Broward County, or for any office in Broward County. And where some might see that as derogatory, I see that as my biggest badge of honor, and the most relevant experience of any candidate to run for Broward County School Board, seat eight countywide. A little bit about me, when I was six years old, my father was shot and killed in front of me. For many people, that would have been their biggest paralyzing moment, but for me, it is my motivation to get up and fight for my community each and every day, and that's what I have been doing all of my academic career. As class president at Fort Lauderdale High School, go flying else, as the student advisor to the school board of Broward County representing 276,000 students, I'm poised and ready for this moment, thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Donna.
Thank you so much, I am Donna Corn, I am your countywide school board member. My background is being a mother of three, two have already graduated from Broward County Public Schools, one is still attending. I am also a prior teacher and graduate from Western High School here in Broward County, so I bring the experience of being in the classroom. I'm 28 years as a business professional in Broward County in commercial real estate, and truly a lifelong child advocate. I grew up with a mother who was a lifelong teacher and guidance counselor, she's actually here with us this evening, and she has driven my passion for education and how it changes a community. It is what gives us the opportunity and the resources for our community and our children to be able to thrive, and for them to be successful in our community. I've been endorsed by the Broward Teachers Union, by the AFL-CIO, by the Broward Principals and Assistants, as well as the firefighters, and engage, engage and Equality Florida and Hispanic Unity. I share all that with you now because I am going to have to step away as I'm pursuing my masters, and my group class happens to be tonight and in 20 minutes, so I'm not going to be able to stay with you, but I have one more question to answer, and I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Donna.
Can we let Donna go through her questions?
Well, I think we can, but first we'll have your opening.
Are you sure? No, no, we got to, anyone that's off doing grad school deserves a break. My name's Alan Zeeman, born and raised here, spent K through 12 here, my dad worked for the school system for 35 years. I left and went to Florida State and got a PhD in econometrics and went off to do the Navy thing for a little while, enjoyed that very much, started a couple businesses, sold one, and I moved down here, the mayor said, why don't you go to this sleepy little education advisory board in Fort Lauderdale and see what you can do, and we did. We moved hard, we moved quickly, we moved strategically, and we worked with the school board and we watched the school board do what they do. It inspired me, because I think we can do so much better. I think we can allocate $25 billion over the next four years in a way that's more strategic, more thoughtful, more intentional, and I'd like to bring the accountability and the discipline of the Department of Defense to Broward County, so that the sixth largest school district in the United States can become the best, and that's what I intend to do. Thank you all very much for being here tonight.
Thank you all. So what we will do here is, we're going to have a total of four questions, and each will be 30 seconds for a response, no questions from the audience, please. And so, we're going to begin with Raymond. First question is, what would you say are the two to three needs that must become priorities for the district to address?
Absolutely, and that's a fantastic question, I'm happy to address that. Number one, ensuring that mental health resources are number one priority for this district, ensuring that we are aligning our budget to make sure that we provide for more guidance counselors, family therapists, and school psychiatrists. Number two, making sure that our infrastructure is up to par to reflect that we are the sixth largest school district in the nation. And number three, expanding vocational and trade programs for our students, because not all of them are going to college, and so they need to be both college and career-ready.
Thank you, Raymond. And Donna, next question's for you, what would you say are the two to three strengths that the district could be most proud?
So, one of the things which is what I've advocated for and made a true difference in is preparing our students with those life skills, making sure that we have the type of courses that prepare our students to be able to work, walk into the workforce, whether they do it to be college-ready, or they walk straight into a career, those are two of the things that, those are one of the things that's critically important to me. The other is equity for all, every student to have the opportunity to be successful when they leave our campuses. It is important that we give equity, so every student has that opportunity to be successful.
Thank you so much, Donna. And so, in this next question, Alan, and you'll hear the word, you know, college and career-ready a number of times tonight, and I'll just say right now, we're referring to technical slash vocational training and certification, state college and university credentials, all of that encompassed in that term. So, Alan, next question, what can be done to improve student achievement and to ensure everyone who graduates is college and career-ready?
Well, I think we got to go back to the budget, to be honest with you, Alex, there's very little kind of keen and intentional work that's done on how we're going to spend this $25 billion. We have not aligned our money to the things that matter the most. We don't do a thorough review. We pass a budget today, and we're already two months into the fiscal year. We can do so much better in terms of thinking about this massive amount of money that we have, so that we can show people we spend it effectively and efficiently, and then go to Tallahassee and fight for more. So, a big part of student achievement is funding, and we can do better here, and we can do better overall in Tallahassee.
Thank you, thank you for that response. So, I know Donna's had to leave for graduate school commitments here.
Ray and I said we'd take turns answering her questions, Alex, is that all right?
I'm going to assume that's probably not within guidelines. But, it was worth asking, of course. We'll start, so we're going to go redirect back to you, Alan, here, and this second round of questions to you, what would you say are the two to three strengths at this point that the district could be most proud?
I think the district can be proud about its degree of caring. I think they want to do well for the people that work here and for the students that are enrolled here. That caring is not reflected, though, in what they do. And you can go to a school board meeting and you can watch it. And if that's the way that we conduct ourselves, it reminds me of my high school student council meeting, Ray, when I was the president of the student body at Fort Lauderdale High School 40 years ago. It's not the way you conduct a board meeting, it's not the way you're serious and intentional about what you're doing. Aren't these 60 seconds, man? Okay, I'm reading your instructions, and it says 60 seconds.
So as we mentioned at the beginning, we had to do a course correction to 30 because of some of the...
You think I'm listening at the beginning? I'm nervous to death up here, guys. All right. Thanks, Mr. Price, you're not Alex anymore, dude.
Oh, man, all right.
Wow.
Okay, all right, we're going to get back on track, 30 seconds, we can do this, we can do this. Raymond, we're going to go back to you, but with that same question that you heard earlier about college and career readiness, I'll just repeat it again, what would you say could be done to improve student achievement and to ensure that everyone who graduates this district is college and career-ready?
Certainly, well, first, you need school board members that listen, Alan. And then, and then, second, going forward, and second, going forward, I think the best way that we do exactly what you just talked about, Alex, is number one, doing exactly what I just said, that's listening to the community, finding out what teachers need and what students need, and then, Alan, aligning the budget to reflect that, because it's students and teachers and administrators that know best what our schools need, not people that have been out of schools for 40 years.
So for this, for this third round of questions, we're going to talk about vision, and I think it's really important to kind of talk, think a little bit higher level into each of your personal visions for this district, so we'll just go back to you, Alan. What is your vision personally for education in this, in this community?
So, my vision is that for principals, assistant principals, teachers, other educators at Broward County, that the southeast United States comes to try and hire them away from Broward County, because we figured out how to do the system in a way that's the envy of the world. And the second part of that vision is that nobody leaves, because there's no way they'd leave the system that we created. So that's where I intend to go, and that's what I intend to lead.
Thank you for that. And same question to you, Raymond, so what would be, just from a high-level vision standpoint, your vision for this district?
I think the vision for this district is, number one, picking up where we've left off, and we've left off, God knows, a very long time ago about caring for the actual constituents in this district, and I think that is the best start. Ensuring that our approach is student-centered and focused, and making sure that the three building blocks of public education, which are parents, teachers, and students, are first and foremost catered to, making sure that this board is ensuring that your tax dollars are being spent in an equitable fashion, and that is the overall vision for our public schools by Raymond in Broward.
Thank you so much. For this next round, we're going to move to the topic of specific priorities. And so, Alan, if elected, what specifically will be your top priorities?
So, on 9/11, I was in the E-ring of the Pentagon, and the plane flew under my office. I had 42 colleagues that I buried for the next three months in Arlington Cemetery. I've lived a national security life my entire career, and I think that we live in the military in the same way that people in schools ought to live, which is feeling 100% safe 100% of the time. We've got to get to that point where when you drop kids off in the morning, you're absolutely confident you're going to pick them up in the afternoon. As a father of seven kids, this is incredibly important to me.
Thank you, thank you so much. Same question for you, Raymond, on priorities, yes?
Certainly, so I have three, but I will agree with Alan that school safety has to be one of them. And as the only candidate of 21 candidates for school board, I'm the only one to go to school who's not a teacher after the Stoneman Douglas shooting. I'm the only candidate that went to school after a global pandemic, and I am the only candidate that's been to school in the last four years. And so, with that, I think that my unique perspective provides so many adequate and accurate depictions of what schools look like today, and so, school safety, mental health, expansion of resources is what my priorities will be.
Thank you. Now, this next, this next section will conclude this particular discussion, and so, we're just going to, this will be 60 seconds, so it's 30 plus 30.
You sure you got that 60 now, my man?
Each will be 60, so we've gone on the record. No, no, but, and actually, why don't we, why don't we start, Alan, with you, if you could just share with us for the next 60 seconds, kind of your conclusion, concluding remarks.
Oh, sure, thank you. First, you know, it's nice to be at the Y with a man named Z-Man, right? Easy to remember, I'm last on your ballot, I'd love to be first in your heart. I've spent a lot of time either running the largest training education system in the world with the United States Navy, becoming promoted to the admiral rank faster than anybody in the history of the Navy, moving back here because I love this area, and then investing, as I did in the nation, with the state, and investing in the local community. I believe this is what I need to do. I spend 80% of my time now in service to other people, and I feel like the thing that I could do best, after eight years on the DOD School Board and five years on the Fort Lauderdale Education Advisory Board, is to join Broward County School Board, and to lead them to an area in which they're not going right now, an aspirational goal, where they could be the best school district in the country. And I'd like to work with people like Ruth Carter Lynch, and other people that are here today, I know, if you want the truth.
Vote for Ruth.
That's it. But, and other candidates that are here, I just happened to see her, but that is why I'm here, and it's why I'm running, and I'd like to take all the experiences I've had and apply them here in Broward County.
Thank you so much, Alan. Raymond, I think it's home.
Thank you, thank you. I tend to do that, by the way, Alex, but I just want to say this, I'm in a very competitive race, and I will not be shy about that. But what I will say is, this November, history is going to prevail right here in Broward County, when Raymond Attarly is elected to the school board, and be the youngest person to do so. And so, what I will say is this, I think that what the school board is doing is good, but we need it to be better, because that's what our community deserves. And I'm not one for promises, because I'm a very pragmatic person, and so I made my campaign slogan very simple and short, Raymond takes notes, because as a student, I know that the results that I get when I take notes and study that, it's better results, and if there's nothing I promised you today, I promise you better results. And so, here's what I'm asking you to do, go to raymondattarly.com for more information about me and my candidacy, but more important, if you're going to vote early, vote by mail or vote on August 23rd, I'm first on your ballot, and so you can't skip me, make sure you bubble in that circle. Thank you and good night.
So, before you leave, I just want to, before you conclude, I just want to, on behalf of all of us, thank you all so much for your commitment, your passion, it's so evident, and we're lucky to have the quality of candidates that we do, so thank you so much. All right, it's time for the second half, I guess this is the fourth quarter. So, we're going to bring up the candidates for Board, the Board candidates for District Five, and so if you would please make your way on up with your walk-on music. Okay, we're almost, almost ready to begin. I want to welcome you all, and once again, as we did with the first group, just thank you so much for your, your heart to serve. This is a very difficult work, we know, and it's incredible, it's just critical work, and so, it's evident by your, by your, your passion and your presence here tonight, that you're here for all the right reasons, and we just applaud you for that. So, thank you. So, we will begin with opening remarks, of course, and is, I will ask, is it okay if I address you by your first name?
Yes, it's Ruth.
Ruth, okay, I, my sister is a circuit court judge in northern Florida, and she, I have to say your honor to my sister. So, with that, I always ask and I do what I'm told. So, but thank you, since we can be a little bit more, a little bit more casual here. So, the order for our opening remarks, if it's okay, we're going to begin with Ruth, and then we're going to go to Natalie, Antonio, Jeff, and then Jimmy, so I'll call, I'll call each one of you in that order, but if you would, kick us off, Ruth.
Now, those lights are blinding, but that's okay. And I guess because I'm short, so they hit me right here. My name is Ruth Carter Lynch, and the first thing I do before I get started is, I always introduce my husband, who is my center, and Pastor Robert Lynch, he is here, he's a hardest-working campaign husband in the business. And I know I have 60 seconds, right, it's not going to take me long, but I also want to thank all of my supporters that are here with my shirts on, okay? Now, I am asking for your support to become your next Broward County School Board member. I'm a 30-year corporate veteran, I'm a board governance trainer, I train people to sit on boards, so I will be ready, day one, to get started, turning the situation around. be ready day one to get started, turning the situation around. It is good. Broward County has a lot to be, be happy about, the school district. They have the best ROTC in the nation. They have the best technical schools in the nation. And they also have one of the best curriculum programs called Cambridge in the nation. There's a lot in Broward County. If you want the truth, vote for Ruth.
Thank you so much, Ruth. And next, Natalie.
Hi. I think this is on. It's on. All right. I'm Dr. Natalie Lynch Walsh. I was born and raised in St. Thomas in the U.S. Virgin Islands. The U.S. Virgin Islands is very diverse. It has a long history, and it's a place where equity is a way of life. So when I moved to the States, I moved first to Colorado, got a bachelor's degree in accounting, and then I moved to Florida, got an MBA and a PhD. And in between there, had a couple of kids. And when my oldest one was in kindergarten, I started volunteering, and that led to 10 years of volunteer service. I've served on the facilities task force five times as the chair since 2011. And I also serve on the district's audit committee, where I've been since 2015. I decided to run in May because even though we have a new superintendent, things haven't changed, and they need to change if we're ever going to have equity in this district, particularly in District Five.
Thank you, Natalie. Antonio?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Antonio Burgess, and I'm running to be your next school board member for District Five. My commitment to District Five actually started as a school age child in this very community. I went to Norfolk Elementary School, Parkway Middle School, and Dillard High School. After graduating from Dillard High School, I went on to Florida A&amp;M University, graduated with a bachelor's degree, and received a master's degree as well. After graduating, I came back to this very district to educate and enrich the lives of students that look just like me. My first teaching job was at Walker Elementary School. We were an F school. We brought that school from an F to a C. After Walker, I taught at Lauderdale Lakes Middle School, and then I opened the six through 12 component at Dillard High School. I am a product of this community. I am an educator in this community, and I have only served in this community. I am running to be your next school board member. I've noticed the disparities amongst the schools in District Five and other, and in other districts around this county. I am passionate about students. My work speaks for itself. My award speaks for itself. I'm running. I'm first on the ballot.
Thank you, Antonio. Thank you for that. Jeff, you're up.
Thank you so much. My name is Dr. Jeff Holness, and I'm a candidate for school board District Five. I grew up in the community of Melrose Park, and I went to Dillard High School. I graduated from Dillard. My first job was working at Winn-Dixie at the corner of Broward and 441. That was probably one of the oldest Winn-Dixie in Broward County. I went on to college. I graduated from Florida Atlantic University, and then I graduated from Nova Southeastern with a doctor of education. I moved on to work for the district as a teacher for 17 years. I've worked at Dillard Community School, Parkway Community School, Lyons Creek Middle, Lyons, Apollo Middle, and Walter C. Young Middle. I went on later to open a learning center for children. I currently own two learning centers in Coral Springs, and I am running because I see students come into my learning center from Broward County Schools. And as a result of the pandemic, there are significant learning gaps that these children have. It is important that we fill these learning gaps. I am a father. I have two sons in Broward County Public Schools, and I believe I have the right background, the right knowledge, the right experience to ensure that our kids will move forward to the next grade level and that we will close these learning gaps. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Jimmy, you're up.
Yes. Thank you all for allowing us this opportunity. First of all, I am super excited about today because today is my 19th year working with the Broward County School System. So I've been working with the district for 19 years, and I'm very happy and proud of what I've done thus far. I believe I'm the only candidate that has worked in three areas within our school district. I started out, matter of fact, I was born and raised in this district. Started out in the district working in food services, South Plantation High School. Then I went over to Arthur Ashe Middle School, where I did safety and security. And now, one of my biggest and best things, of course, that I've done is now being the brace advisor for the past 13 years at Dillard High School. My, my, my family graduated at Dillard High School as well. And I'm very passionate about what I do. And I've been working in this community, not just today, not just yesterday, but for over 30 years, working tirelessly in this community to make sure that our students have exactly what they need.
Thank you all. Thank you all for those opening remarks. The passion's very evident, and you can feel it. And we thank you for that. So the format will be four questions. These will all be 30 seconds. I know that's a little bit of a change, but that had to do with the, the first judicial group running a little bit long. So we're sorry for that change. But each will be 30 seconds, and then we'll go to a 60 second closing remark. And so this first question will be for Natalie at the end. Question is this. What will be your specific areas of focus regarding student achievement in District Five? And do you have specific suggestions for improvement?
So in District Five, since the, since COVID, we've seen schools that were getting somewhere towards 30 to 40%, say, language, reading language, arts achievement, slide back to the teens and twenties. And overall, in Broward County, there's the 30% achievement gap between white and black students. And that just can't be. 10 years ago, there were goal, the district had goals to increase language arts proficiency to something like 84%. So specifically, we need to find things that work and implement them.
Thank you. Thank you for those specifics. Antonio, kind of a long question. Here we go. So knowing your leadership of mentoring tomorrow's leaders and 5,000 role models, it's clear, it's obvious that you understand the importance of mentoring supports for our youth. Here's the question. What else can be done to improve student achievement and ensure that everyone graduates college and career ready?
All right. Thank you for that question. Mentoring is, that's what I do. But mentoring is a, okay. Mentoring is such a broad area. And there's a lot of components that we work on. Student achievement, making sure students are college and career readiness, community engage, community engagement of the community with business partners and local community colleges. Right now, we have a partnership with Broward College where our students receive college credits as a high school student for free. They get, those are the type of opportunities that our students deserve, and I will advocate for that as your next school board member.
Hey, thank you so much, Antonio. This next question is going to be for you, Jimmy. So Jimmy, similar, similar question. So as the brace advisor from Dillard High School, you probably, you know, think about this a lot, too. What else, what else can be done in the district to improve student achievement to assure that we, all of our youth, go to career and college readiness after graduation?
Well, what's going to be the big key? And I believe that everyone here probably is definitely on one accord, is building that relationship. For the past 13 years being at Dillard High School as the brace advisor, what I've done and I strived on is building relationship, making sure that we are able to bridge the gap between our community, making sure that our stakeholders are involved in on that process. At Dillard High School, we thrive on making sure that our alumni, they're able to give those scholarships. So every year, we're advocating and we're bringing those stakeholders to their table. So making sure that they're working together.
Thank you so much. Jeff, next question is for you. What would you say two to three needs that must become priorities for this district to address?
Okay, so one of the needs that we have is that we must be able to attract and retain qualified teachers. And in doing so, it just does not mean compensating teachers properly, but we have to value and respect our teachers. We have to involve teachers in the decision making process. Secondly, we must find a way to close the emerging learning gaps that we see from the pandemic. We must implement programs that work, and this also goes hand in hand with attracting and retaining qualified teachers.
Thank you, Jeff. And this last question this round, Ruth, what would you say are two to three strengths at this point that the district would be proud of?
Two to three strengths? I think I talked about them when I first, I came up here. And that is the, the technical colleges, and the Cambridge program, and ROTC. Those are the three things that they can be proud of, and they have not wavered on that. As a matter of fact, they're the best in the nation on that. But let me just say this. The school board is about making sure that that budget is okay. That's what the school board is about. And we need to be able to manage that budget and pay our teachers. Without teachers, we don't have a school district.
Thank you so much, Ruth. We're moving on to our, to our second candidate question round. The first in this round will go to Antonio. Antonio, here's your question. Can you describe for all of us the difference between the role of a school board member and that of a school superintendent or administration?
All right. So a school board member has four roles. They hire the superintendent, and they evaluate the superintendent. They advocate for the community. They advocate for a community to improve student achievement and community involvement. They organize the budget and create the budget, and they create policy that help and increase student achievement for students and families. Superintendent, we're her boss. We're their boss. And we make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Thank you, Antonio. Jeff, this next question's for you. Jeff, how can members of the board and the school board meetings in general become more accessible to our community as a whole?
Okay, well, it's important that we have community outreach and that we engage the community, that we find effective ways and to encourage the community to be at school board meetings. And we also have to be transparent with the community as well. It's important for us to, to find ways to have community events. And as school board members, we need to be able to be involved in these community events as well. And to encourage, you know, our community to, if they can't make it to the school board meetings, that they actually do go on there and watch the meetings that are recorded as well.
Very good. Thank you so much, Jeff. Jimmy, you're up next. Question. What will be your areas of focus regarding student achievement in District Five? And do you have some specifics, specific ideas for improvements?
Well, definitely, as, as, as I always revert back to me being as a brace advisor for the past 13 years, one thing that I can say that we can do with, with our achievement is making sure that we're having those programs that we had in our school when I was growing up. Those, those technology programs, those technical programs, bringing those programs back to the school. Ms. Ruth talked about the Cambridge program. My principal said to us this morning in this very room that Dillard High School will be one of the first schools to ensure that that Cambridge program is taught by all teachers this school year.
Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you. Ruth, what would you say are outputs or legislation from Tallahassee that have positively impacted the schools here in Broward?
From this governor right now? I don't think so. No, I don't think anything that he's done. So much that he has done that's wrong has overshadowed the things that he did right. Okay? Now, one of the things that I want to say about that, all of these policies, especially dealing with, with different, with sexuality and all of that, is nonsense. CRT is nonsense. Okay? Because all that's to doing, they want to take black history and slavery out of the school system. Okay? That's my point.
Thank you so much, Ruth. Natalie, we're going to have you finish up this round. Question for you. What changes should be made at the state and local level regarding public education? What changes?
Well, the state needs to fund, better fund, public education. We're near the bottom of the heap in terms of funding, both per pupil and teacher pay, although they did recently increase starting teacher, teacher pay, but didn't address more tenured teachers. At the local level, you need school board members that are qualified, that know what their job is, that know how to set policy, and how to manage a budget. And also, they need to remember that they are the boss of the superintendent, not the other way around.
Thank you so much for those specifics. Third, third round here, we're going to have Antonio, you kick us off here. Question for you here is what differentiates you from the other candidates here at the table?
Oh, that's a very good question. I'm the only candidate that has taught in the school district at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. I'm the only candidate that graduated and attended all schools in this district. I am the only candidate that came back to college from college to work in this district, improving educational outcomes from students, bringing in scholarship monies, bringing in grants and partnerships from different businesses, from local businesses, bridging that equity gap for our marginalized students and students in this community. I've been doing it since I graduated from school.
Thanks, Antonio. Did a great job of banging that bell, too. That's kind of a scary noise. I would definitely, I, yeah. Good, good stuff. Jeff, same question to you. It's a great one. What differentiates you from your colleagues here?
I think what differentiates me is that is my, my years of experience and knowledge. I completed a doctor of education degree because I love education. I worked in the district for 25 years as a teacher. I've also been a business owner of a learning center where I get to interact with the community, understand student learning needs. I also developed programs while I was a teacher in Broward County Schools. I was the one who developed student learning communities at Lyons Creek Middle, which was adopted by another middle school as well, where we improved the student learning outcome of the bottom 25 percentile. I am coming to the district with years of experience, a business owner, one of the most successful command learning centers in Broward County, and I'm bringing that experience to the district as well.
Thank you, Jeff. Not as afraid of the bell, but that's okay. But that question is such a good one, Jimmy, that we've got to ask it a third time. What would you say differentiates you from your esteemed colleagues here at the table?
Well, well, first of all, I've had the opportunity for the past 19 years with working with the district. Out of all the candidates, I've worked in three capacities within the school district. Food services, been a security, safety and security, campus monitor, and now presently the brace advisor at Dillard High School. So I'm very proud of being able to work in those three capacities within the school district. And so, building relationship, that's what I've done for the past couple of years, the years. And so we're going to continue to build those relationships.
Thank you, Jimmy.
At 30 seconds, whoo.
And Ruth, I know it's shocking, but I'm going to be asking you about what might differentiate you as well?
Yes, I am a board governance trainer. I train people to sit on boards. So I know exactly what to do day one. Secondly, I am on assignment. Everybody else is running for office, and my assignment is, is to make sure that District Five gets its just due after being underserved for the last 40 years. That's my assignment.
Thank you, Ruth. And Natalie, we'll have you close this off strong here with the, with the same question about differentiation between you and your, your colleagues here.
Okay, so while my opponents bring lots of different things to the table, I'm the only one actually doing the job and have been doing it for the past 10 years. I have to prepare for board items to be able to advise board members and to advocate. For example, today, we had the chief auditor's evaluation tool, and I had to make sure that that went back to the audit committee. With my background, I did financial reporting. I also taught at a college level. And like I said, there's no learning curve here. I'll hit the ground running.
Terrific. So before we go into, into our closing remarks, this last question will be about vision. So I'll just go ahead and say upfront, this will be the same question, but I think maybe it's the most important one because it really speaks to who you are as a leader, what you see big picture needs to be done, and how you would drive that vision forward if you are elected. We'll begin, Jeff, with you. Share with us, what is your vision for education here in Broward County?
Okay, my vision is that in Broward County, we have qualified teachers working in the district, teachers who want to be teachers in our district. My other vision is that we fully embrace diversity in the district, and not just be tolerant, but embrace diversity among all children. My other vision is to see that children, regardless of race, gender, and so forth, they are functioning equally, and they're achieving equal results. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Jimmy, share with us your vision for education here in the county.
Well, my, my, my vision for this school district is building relationship. We can never do anything without you, the stakeholders, bringing you to the table, making sure that you're at the table and you're helping to make decisions across this school district. I'm only one person on the board, and of course, there's nine other persons, there's eight other persons that will be on the board. But we want to make sure that but we want to make sure that you have the adequate success, and it's going to take all of us to move this district forward. So making sure that we're bringing the community leaders and the stakeholders to the table.
Thank you, Jimmy. And Ruth, you're up next. Share with us your vision.
My vision is this. We have to make sure that, one, we right-size this district, get rid of the waste. I have been working with some friends of mine and colleagues, and we have found a waste of the tune of $270-some million. Once we clean up that waste, then we can do a whole lot of other things, like, one, pay our teachers an equitable salary. If you want the truth, you vote for Ruth.
Thank you so much. Natalie, will you share with us your vision for Broward County schools?
So today, we had parents, teachers, and the community advocating all together, and that's because they were informed and empowered. So my vision is having an informed citizenry that's empowered to advocate for themselves. That's happened with schools like Parkway, Stranahan, and I'm hoping with Bethune in Hollywood. But to have a school board that functions and staff that are qualified, so we create a better work environment for our teachers and a learning, better learning environment for students.
Thank you. And Antonio, we'll have you finish up with sharing with everyone your vision.
Absolutely. My vision for Broward County schools, more specifically District Five, is that we are the best school district in the nation, that we have the best and the brightest teachers, that we recruit and we retain. We have strong leadership, that our students are able to compete globally, that they have options when they graduate, and that they are prepared for college or careers when they leave Broward County with their diploma, that we have caring adults, and that community is involved, and that's our community stakeholders. Businesses and partners are all at the table.
Thank you, Antonio. And I think before we go into closing remarks, just want to say, you know, clearly, you all are all here for the right reasons. It really came through with your vision responses. This last section will be 60 seconds, not 30, so 60 seconds to share with all of us here, your kind of closing, someone said the closing argument, but really just kind of, you know, why you would be the right choice for this really, really critical board position. So we're going to begin with Jimmy, then we'll go with Ruth, Natalie, Antonio, and Jeff. So Jimmy, you're up.
All right. Closing remarks, closing arguments. It's definitely my passion. Let me say that. I've been working in this community for over 30 years. I've been living in this community for over 30 years. Born and raised here in Fort Lauderdale. It's just not something for me just to do. This is just not something that I woke up with, but this has been a part of my life. My family, we own businesses here in this community, Plantation. My wife and I, we have a business, Spoons, our restaurant, and the list goes on. We give out scholarships in this community. And so, I'm running because I'm passionate about helping and ensuring that everyone in Broward County school system, in our school system, has the necessary tools that they have so that they can continue to be successful. Accountability is very important to me. Making sure that everyone is held accountable for whatever they're doing. And so, if you want someone that's going to hold this district accountable, vote Jimmy Witherspoon on August 23rd or before. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Ruth?
Thank you, and thank you, Alex. We appreciate you. Great host. Thank you. I'm running to be your next Broward County School District Five board member because I have spent the last 22 years in delivering, working, and District Five. So I understand all the nuances, and let me just say this. You have to understand the rules of engagement. You have to be able to build consensus, because I'm only one vote. So I have to be able to work with all of my fellow board members to make things happen and move in Broward County, okay? If you want the truth. But before you do that, I am a politician, and you have to be, know politics, so you can recognize the politics. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ruth. Natalie?
I'm Dr. Natalie Lynch Walsh. I'm asking for your vote for school board District Five. Whether you vote early, vote by mail, and certainly by August 23rd. If you want to learn more about me and my background and my qualifications and my service to the people of Broward County, you can visit my website, natalylinchwalsh.com. I'm running because I believe I'm the best qualified candidate to bring about equity in District Five. You have to know the system in order to dismantle what's wrong with it. I can't think of any better way than to know what you're getting into, and I have 10 years of experience at the district level, and I look forward to your support.
Thank you so very much. Antonio?
Listen, unlike Ms. Ruth, I'm not a politician. I'm an educator that went to school to improve the educational lives of students. I attended schools in this district, as I said before. I worked only in schools in this district. My lens is different than any other person on this board. I know, I live it. I know what our community needs. Just today, we were traveling and touring the different needs of the students and the families and where they come from in the community. I've been doing it since I graduated from college, improving the educational outcomes of students. That's what we should be doing as educators. I wake up every single morning. I build consensus, and I work with school leaders and teachers and figure out how can we close the achievement gap and make education and learning better for our students and families. I am first on the ballot, and I will promise to keep our students, families, and community first.
Thank you so much, Antonio. Jeff, bring us home strong.
Thank you so much for having me, and I'd like to say, at the end of the day, this is about you and your children's learning outcome. And when you look at what I've done, I own a learning center, actually, two learning centers in Coral Springs. If you go on my review sites, you will see the results of my children. I have over 300 students in my learning center, most of them from Broward County schools, from kindergarten through 12th grade. And when you look at those reviews, you can see the joy on these parents. I am bringing the same to the school board. We are living in unprecedented times. Because of the pandemic, your children have significant learning gaps. This is about your children. This is about their learning outcome and their future. You must select the person that will be able to close those learning gaps and look at the evidence of what they've done before. I've created student learning communities for the bottom 25 percentile when I was a teacher, and if you want to know more about me, just go ahead and Google my learning centers, and you will see how happy these parents are. I'm bringing that to your children on the board. Vote Jeff Holness. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And for all of our candidates, please, a big round of applause for all their efforts tonight and the, I think, the real authentic responses. We learned an awful lot. A big time thank you to the YMCA for hosting us tonight, for the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations, and of course, their president, Mary Piliquin. I think she is behind me.
I'm right here. I'm right here.
To my right. It's been a long night. I'm sorry, Mary. Thank you. I just want to say, before I leave, thank you so much. This was an honor to be a part of.
Thank you, Alex. You are wonderful. I really appreciate all the time and energy you took to be our moderator. Thank you so much. It was great getting to know you. And I want to thank all the candidates for coming out tonight. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And thanks to the incredible LALE YMCA and their staff that did all this tonight, the guys in the back, people out everywhere. I want to thank them. They've just been terrific. And I also want to thank all of my council volunteers. I had about 12 of them here tonight. I need to especially thank my right and left arms, Colleen Lockwood and Michael Albeda. I would never have been able, this never would have happened without them. I want to remind everybody that we can see you. You can come back here September 20th for the City Commission Candidate Forum. It'll be right here, same time, same place on September 20th. So that's it for tonight. Everybody have a safe drive home. Thank you for coming.